The City Council September 6th meeting to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Vizcarra.
Here.
Councilmember Yu.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Man.
Here.
Mayor Sternquist.
Here. Okay, the invocation this evening is going to be given by Mayor Pro Tem Man. Thank you.
Could you please rise for the invocation?
Did he know?
He did.
Did he know?
Now.
He does now. Let's pray. Our Lord God, we pray that you bless us tonight with your wisdom and grace so that our council can make the best decisions on how we can better serve our communities. Guide us through the many changes that are happening at the state and federal level that inevitably impact how we govern at a local level. Teach us to adapt and find creative ways to solve problems. As we continue to battle the pandemic, we ask that you protect those who have been at the front lines this entire time, from our first responders such as our sheriffs and firefighters, to those in the medical profession, and all public servants who have dedicated themselves to providing essential services to our residents and businesses. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I am going to call Aunt Krista Wong, and she is going to lead us in our flag salute.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you, Krista. Okay, we move to ceremonial matters. We have a presentation from Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District, an update on current water supply conditions. And of course, we are all extremely interested in this. And we have the general manager, Tom Love, and Director Charles Trevino to provide the update. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sternquist, members of the council. I'm Charles Trevino, and I proudly represent the city of Temple City as a director on the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District.
Charles, move this up a little bit. There you go.
Yeah. Is it on?
Just raise it up closer to.
Higher?
Yeah, higher, yeah.
A little bit better there?
There you go. Yes.
Better? Okay. As many of you are familiar, Upper District is a regional water supplier for 26 water utilities and 18 cities. Our primary responsibility is to deliver replenishment water from the state water project through connections with Metropolitan Water District, and we are heavily relying on this water to maintain sustainability for our groundwater basin. And let me put my glasses on because I can't see what I'm reading here.
I remember when you used to come here and didn't need glasses.
Remember that? That was.
Yeah.
It was a long time ago. Fernando remembers even before that. Anyway, thank you. The state is currently in its 30th year of a historic drought. The severity of this drought has required the state, Metropolitan, and Upper District, and cities to take bold emergency action to maximize our limited water supplies. Upper District has asked our residents to cut their water use by 20% and reduce watering to two days a week, and in some areas, one day a week. However, we're not asking them to do it alone. We are committed to working with our cities and water retailers and providing resources and educating our residents on rebates and programs available to help them save water. Tom Love, our general manager, will provide you with a current state of our local water supply conditions and Upper District's drought actions. And I want to thank the city of Temple City for inviting us here to give us this opportunity to present. And I'll turn it over to Tom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Trevino. I really appreciate those words to set the stage for what I want to talk to you about. I'm going to talk to you about how serious this current drought is, not just California, but the entire Western United States. It's affecting all of us. I'm going to talk about what we've done to prepare for this kind of situation, and then what we're doing to get through this situation with some immediate actions, some short-term actions, and long-term actions that will hopefully better set us up to deal with this and even worse droughts than we're experiencing right now. So I'll jump right into it. I think I can advance from here. I'm not sure. Can I have a? Maybe it's not on. Might need my glasses. Yep, it's on. It's on. Well, I've got a mouse, but let me. There we go. Maybe. So I'm going to skip that slide. I think I've got it figured out. There we go. Okay, thank you. So Director Trevino talked about the district, our service area. We're represented by five elected board members. Our sources of water actually for this region come from three sources. First and foremost is our local water supplies. That's indicated by the picture on the right. That is Morris Dam in San Gabriel Canyon. The County of Los Angeles Flood Control owns and operates three dams in that canyon. They capture storm water when it does rain, store it, and then release it into the Santa Fei Spreading Grounds, which are near the 605-210 interchange. And back in April, you actually saw water in those ponds. That was canyon water that was captured from rainfall we received this winter that's put back into the groundwater supplies to meet our needs. But that is not enough to meet our needs, and so typically 20% of our water supply comes from water from Northern California. And some of it does come from the Colorado River Aqueduct. But primarily, our groundwater is replenished with water from Northern California through the California Water Project. So how serious is it? As I mentioned, the entire Western United States is in extreme or exceptional drought. On the state water project supplies, this is the lowest three-year supply on record. To put it in perspective, normally on average conditions, Metropolitan Water District gets about 3 million acre feet, about 1 million acre feet per year from the state water project. The Department of Water Resources' lowest forecast previously was 1 million acre feet over three years. Over the current three years, 2020, 21, 21, and 2022, Metropolitan is only receiving 600,000 acre feet, 40% less than DWR's worst-case forecast. So it's very severe. On a local water supply, we're starting the year in a little better condition. That's because of actions that were taken in 2017 and 2019, which were wet years and high allocation on the state water project. And water was brought in and stored in our groundwater basin. That's through an agreement we have with Metropolitan where they deliver the water when they have it, and then we pay for it over a period of time. In 2019, we put a record amount of Northern California water in our groundwater basin, and we're living off those supplies now. And so you can see to the right of that chart, that is the elevation of the groundwater beneath our feet. It is coming down. We're monitoring it closely, and we are taking actions, including the conservation, that is helping keep those waters, those stored water supplies in the ground as long as possible so that we can manage through this until we can get some precipitation or other deliveries of water, which we are working on. So the area of Metropolitan, you've seen a couple of maps. This is the one that came out in around May and June. These are the areas that are affected by that limited state project supplies. We call them the state project-dependent areas. There are six agencies. There are 6 million people that live in those orange areas, including here in the San Gabriel Valley. And we're all approaching this under two paths that were provided by the Metropolitan Board. Path one was to mandate with enforcement one day a week outdoor watering, and that is what has happened out on the northwest portion of LA in what's called the Las Vergenes Service Area. That affects Calabasas, Agoura Hills, Hidden Hills. You may have seen some information on the news about some celebrities who live out there that have had flow restrictors put on their meters. But here in the San Gabriel Valley, because we have that groundwater we delivered in 2019, we are on a different path where we'll live within a volumetric limit, a certain amount of water that Metropolitan will deliver to us, and we do not have to mandate such extreme outdoor water use restrictions. But as I mentioned, to make those supplies last as long as possible, we are recommending everyone go to no more than two-day-a-week outdoor watering. Everyone has come in compliance. Now, every resident may not be in compliance, but you see the evidence. You see the brown lawns. That's why Director Trevino and I wear our brown lawn jackets today, just to say this is the way your lawn should be looking with that two-day-a-week. And so it wasn't just recently we reacted. It was actually over a year ago. We moved to Level 2 of our water shortage contingency plan, anticipating that we may end up with another dry year. And then it was in May 11th when we took our action on what we call Path 2, and that's the two-day-a-week outdoor watering and calling for a 20% conservation. So our immediate actions are conservation, and we've got a lot of resources. I'll show more of them a little later on education, outreach, getting everyone to understand, and some tools and incentives to help people conserve this water. That's the immediate action. The near-term action is we are seeking regulatory approval to allow us to deliver water from the Colorado River to the San Gabriel River. And there's an invasive species, the quagga mussel. We've worked with County Public Works on a control plan that is under review by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And if that's approved, we will be able to bring water from the Colorado River to help replenish our groundwater basin. The, I mentioned the increased community outreach, but our long-term solutions include the Metropolitan and LA County Sanitation District, now called the Pure Water Southern California. You previously heard us talk about it as a regional recycle water project. It is, when it's built, it will be the largest recycle water project in the country, and it will deliver 60,000 to 80,000 acre feet annually for groundwater replenishment in the San Gabriel Valley and eliminate our dependence on that water from Northern California. That project is underway, but it's a major $4 billion investment, and will likely take up to 10 years before it's delivering water. So we've got to get through those intervening years with these other tools that we have in our tool belt.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
I didn't know. Where does that water come from?
So the Regional, or the Pure Water Southern California comes from the LA County Sanitation District Joint Outfall Plant, which is in the city of Carson. So it is the ocean, it is the ocean outfall plant. Right now, I think the flow is going through that plant or somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 million gallons per day, and this project will take about half of that water, treat it to a very high level with reverse osmosis, UV disinfection, and deliver it back for groundwater replenishment and other uses. So it's wastewater. It's sewer water that's going to that joint outfall plant in Carson.
One other question. Who's building that project? Is that project underway? You said $4 billion?
It is underway. In fact, the notice of, notice of availability for the environmental document comes out this month. So the environmental work is underway. Preliminary engineering is underway. Legislation is expected to be signed by the governor to allow Metropolitan to expedite project construction. Though it is, it's not under construction yet, although there is a pilot plant operating. It's in the design and environmental review phase right now.
Who would pay for the $4 billion?
So it will, currently it is proposed by the LA County Sanitation District because they have avoided costs on an ocean outfall if this project is built, and Metropolitan Water District. But over the last couple of years, at a federal level, Congresswoman Napolitano has been very instrumental in increasing the amount of federal funding available for this scale of projects from what was typically 20 million to now $500 million. And there's also funds that potentially could come from the state. So state and federal grant funds are certainly being looked at to help fund this project.
So would, would we see an increase in our rates?
There, this project would result in additional expenditure, but, but there's not much choice. We need some additional water, and this is the next cheapest source of water. We could go to ocean desalinization.
Right.
Which has been done and probably will be done, but that's much more expensive than, than this recycle water project.
Yeah, do we have a sense how much it will, it may go up?
Yeah, yeah. But everything we're doing to try and put in resiliency within the California water system, you know, there is cost associated with that. We're going to try and get as much federal and state funding to mitigate that as we can. So our outreach campaign, you probably see some of these billboards, bus stop signs, trying to get the public's attention, make them aware we have a situation, and then directing them to the resources that can help them, help all of us by conserving water. There are rebates and incentives on Metropolitan's website, bewaterwise.com. We do have a new Water Smart Home Kit. We have funding for that, but it's, it is targeted to our disadvantaged communities, which is a very large portion of our service area. It's a kit with low-flow fixtures, low-flow showerheads, other devices and tools that homeowners can use to help conserve water within their homes.
Hey, Tom, I have a question. If you go back to the slide, previous slide, you had there commercial and residential turf rebates. Is that for artificial turf or, or regular grass or what are the rebates for?
So the rebates is to remove your grass. Grass is very high water use and put in low-water use landscaping.
Okay.
And so you tear out your front lawn, you put in some, some rock, maybe some succulents. There's other types of plants. There's some really neat designs out there.
Because I know a lot of people are now putting in fake grass. Is there, are there rebates for any of those types of programs?
On a limited basis, because the intent of this isn't to remove vegetation. It's to replace it with a reasonable amount of vegetation. We just don't want people putting in a rock garden with no plants. We want plants to go back in, but plants that are much more efficient in their use of water.
Thank you.
So our outreach, we are out in several community events with outreach booths. If you have things or your community groups have events, please let us know. Contact us through our website. Speaker Shapiro, such as this presentation today, we're also going out to Kiwanis, Rotaries, and other service clubs with information. Our landscaping classes, now that we've moved those online, we're reaching a lot more people. And then I want to make a big plug for October 15th at Arcadia County Park is our annual Oktoberfest. It was in hiatus for a couple of years because of COVID, and we're really happy to bring it back and certainly encourage your attendance. It's a great event and look forward to seeing, you know, community members from Temple City attend. Waterfest. Did I say Oktoberfest? My, my son is in Germany, he's going to Germany for Oktoberfest. So that's not my mom.
It's a water fest in October.
It is in October, but it's Waterfest. And so that concludes, I know I went through a lot of information very quickly. Hopefully it was informative. Be happy to answer any questions or provide additional information.
Tom, is there any lists that the Upper District could make available of people who remove your grass? It is the hardest thing to remove. If I don't, I have one section that I've been letting die out. I think I'm on month three, and that, and we haven't, nobody's watering it, and I tried to take out just a small section with one of those hatchets and an axe and every, it is nearly impossible. It's so hard to remove, and I've reached out to different gardeners, and nobody wants to remove grass.
So, you know, you might have to go to a licensed landscape contractor, which can be a little expensive. But there, there were some during the initial turf rebate a number of years ago. One company was called Turf Terminators. They kind of took advantage of the program a little inappropriately, but they, they would go out and market it. They'd come out and remove your turf. The problem was what they put back in was not of high value, so you've got to watch out for that. But it would be a licensed land, and I will check with staff and see if we do have a list of, you know, landscapers who are doing that and, and available.
Okay. And then once it's removed, I, I believe I was told to take pictures before, and then once it's removed, then you apply for the rebate?
Yeah, so what I would suggest is get on Be Water Wise right away. Go to that program and find out the parameters. They have changed the rules because of the drought. It used to be if the before picture was a dead lawn, you didn't qualify. But if you've already turned off your sprinklers because we've asked you to and your lawn's dead, that's okay now. So if your lawn's already dead, it's okay. So, but get on the website, check what the prerequisite requirements are to make sure you're following those so that you will qualify for that rebate.
And I just want to share with the public, I mean, I love my green yard. I always have. But now it's almost like you get shamed for having a green lawn, and it, at this point, I don't think it's a bad thing because we are in this situation. And I'm, I was reluctant initially to give up my green lawn, but I do understand the severity of this. And so I have found alternatives that look as nice, maybe not quite as nice, but they will eventually. So I know there are ways to eliminate your green lawns and still have a beautiful yard. So I would encourage people to go onto the Upper District website. They, they have done a great job recently of putting the programs on that are, are available and, you know, see what you can do to help.
Thank you, Mayor, for those, those words. That's very encouraging to hear.
We will definitely, as a city, encourage our neighbors and remind people through our Facebook pages. I know Brian has, when I forward him something, he's had staff put the Upper District thing on our website. So we're trying to help also. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
And Charles, thank you, of course, for always being such a good representative of the Upper District for us.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you.
Tom, can I ask, can I ask one more question? This might be a loaded question for, for you, Tom, so maybe not for this forum, but something I've always wanted to learn more about from the Water District is what role does the Water District or other agencies play in advising or counseling state-level policies on housing? Because we keep hearing drought, drought, conserve, conserve. So I think the logical conclusion for many people is that we don't have enough water. And so when we have a push to build more housing, inevitably there's an infrastructure kind of, I guess, there just seems like a catch-22 for a lot of people. But instead of us kind of jumping to that conclusion ourselves, I think it would be helpful to hear from the experts in the future as to what role of any does that play?
And I'll give you a very, I get asked that question a lot, and I've struggled with the answer to the question. But I need to put myself in the role as we are a water resource, water supply manager. We look out in the future. We try and project what growth and, and water demands will be. Frankly, they're not going to, water demands are not going to rise with growth because of the conservation, the efficiency, and how density doesn't equate to a large amount of growth in water. Regardless, so our job is to look out and identify what do we need to do? What projects? What measures do we need to take to make sure water's available for the growing population? Because, because our job isn't housing or urban planning. Perhaps it should be. I'm not saying it shouldn't be, but that's my short answer on, on the way we approach it. This question has come up. There has been some discussion at the San Gabriel Valley COG Water Committee and Environmental and Energy Committee, that, that very topic. So I think it's an ongoing discussion. Be happy to engage more on that later.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, you're absolutely right. It's a concern, and I think that it's something that we as water officials should be involved in the dialogue of how much housing is, is acceptable, and how much density can be put into a city or a given area. We have to project that there'll be enough water 20 years, 30 years out for this for any project to be viable, any housing project. And it's big, I mean, hard to predict that, but we just don't know. But I think your point is a very, very valid point.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We move on to Item B, Appointment and Introduction of Temple City Youth Committee. And we have, this is our youth committee, and we have three new members. We have Krista Wong, who led us in our flag salute, Isabel Shi, and Kevin Zhang. So please come up, and we're going to have the whole youth committee introduce themselves, and then we're going to take a picture with you.
Would you like us to, would you like them to introduce themselves first and then go up to grab the certificates?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Krista Wong. I'm currently a freshman at Temple City High School, and this is my first term with youth committee. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Isabel Shi. I am currently a junior at Temple City High School, and this is also my first year on youth committee.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kevin Zhang. I'm a junior at Flinners Preparatory School, and this is also my first year as a youth council member. I'm very excited.
Good evening, council. My name is Lauren Chi, and I'm going to be a senior at Temple City High School, and this is going to be my fourth year on youth committee.
Wow.
Good evening, council. My name is Hannah Kwak. I'm a senior at Temple City High School, and this will be my second term on youth committee.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amir King. I am a junior at Temple City High School, and this is going to be my second term on the youth committee.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Cho, and I'm currently a senior with Temple City High School, and this is my second year with youth committee.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Quo. I'm currently a sophomore at Temple City High School, and this is my second year on youth committee.
Good evening. I'm Priscilla Cito. I'm a junior at Temple City High School, and this will be my second year on youth committee.
Okay. Is that everybody?
All right, William. And then can we have council come up so we can take a picture? I don't know.
We can have them in the front.
Thank you, Peggy. Okay. We move on to.
Mayor Sternquist, just one more, one more brief presentation about the youth committee. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for allowing us to introduce ourselves and accept the National Preparedness Month proclamation for September 2022. We'd like to briefly inform City Council on our objective this year and how it aligns with the city's strategic goal of public health and safety. This year, one of youth committees' objectives will be emergency preparedness and safety. We will be participating in a series of workshops relating to public safety and emergency preparedness facilitated by Public Safety Supervisor Mr. Brian Arizumi.
Workshop topics include situational awareness, fire safety, CPR, and first aid kits, and other topics that are in line with this objective. We will also be creating messages that promote this objective to be, to be displayed on the digital billboard on Rosemead Boulevard, as well as share with our peers and community the special events of the city. The skills we will learn from these workshops, we will look forward to with our 2022 to 2023 objectives. And we'd like to thank you and the City Council for your support and the time to speak with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you both. I think it's important, I think councils should have some situational training. It would be helpful for us.
And I'm sure that has to do a lot with when there are incidents such as things that happened in Las Vegas or at concerts. Is, is that what that training was regarding or?
A little bit different. Mr. Arizumi can talk about some of that, just very briefly, with the training component, what he's going to be working with the youth committee, just very briefly.
So it does talk about personal safety and being situationally aware, but we are looking at it from an emergency management, disaster preparedness perspective, also from a public safety perspective. But some of the situational awareness that we're going to talk about is being aware of your surroundings when you enter a facility, knowing where the evacuation routes are, where the exits are, because if you go into a facility and everybody tries to exit the same way they came in, that's going to lead to a lot of injury and possibly death. And so it's raising their awareness that if they go to the movie theater, they go to a restaurant, look around and know where they need to go if they need to exit quickly.
No, I think that's really valuable. So. No, I think that's really valuable, so something that possibly we could learn from too. So thank you. I have this proclamation. Uh oh, thank you. And this is from the City of Temple City Proclamational Proclamation, National Preparedness Month, September twenty twenty-two. And um there it it's a very long proclamation, and I'm gonna put it here. And if anyone wants to read all of it, it Jerry has it online. But I will say that on behalf of um the City of Temple City and the City Council, we present this to you. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Cynthia Sternquist, as mayor, and on behalf of the City Council, proclaims the month of September twenty twenty-two as National Preparedness Month in Temple City. The City Council encourages all residents, neighborhoods, businesses, and schools to take steps to prepare for emergencies, to participate in community events and activities throughout the month and year, and to visit www dot alleycounty dot gov slash emergency, it's backslash, to increase their knowledge of emergency preparedness dated the sixth of September twenty twenty-two. And maybe we can get that um website on our website so people can follow up on that. So congratulations. Thank you. And let's take a picture. And I know Councilmember Chavez, who is so proud of the youth committee, would like to say a few words.
Thank you. Well, we are very proud of our youth committee. Um I know Peggy and Jillian have put a lot of work so far in getting this year going. Um we've got a great mix of of veteran committee members and a good mix of new committee members, so we're excited about that. Lauren, I can't believe you're gonna be a senior, and I remember interviewing you as an eighth grader. It just seems like yesterday. That's really a testament, I think, to our youth committee in that they stick around. And uh they do get a lot out of it, and the city, of course, gets a lot out of their efforts, and so very grateful for that. I just wanna share real briefly, in addition to the um emergency preparation or pre- preparedness and safety program, the youth committee has also taken on a couple of other goals as uh our objectives this year as well. One, of course, is what we call Government One-O-One, which we started, what, Peggy, a year or two ago, I think? Where um we have members of our staff will meet with department heads, uh or department heads will meet with the youth committee and talk to them about local government and what they do. Good education and part of the goal and part of the thing or part of the reasons we have the youth committee is so that they can learn about local government and give them the opportunity to ask questions and get a good working knowledge of of how the city works. Uh the other one has to do with what we're now calling the unhoused population. Or I think that's the homeless, correct? Okay, so maybe that's the politically politically correct term. But they'll be working on uh programs to inform and educate members so they understand what resources are available to the unhoused population and act as a source of information. So three really good, good objectives this year are keeping busy all year. And of course, we'll see them from time to time at city events as well. And uh hopefully, next time you see them, they'll all have their matching shirts on too as well, so we can tell them who they, tell who they are. But again, very proud of them, and of course, uh as you know, the council does appreciate your efforts. And um we look forward to working with you this year, so congratulations. Thank you.
I would like to um let the youth commission, commission, committee know along with council. And maybe, Brian, you could follow up on the date. I believe it's next weekend. I don't, I think they were gonna postpone it because of the heat. But in Baldwin Park, they are having the opening of tiny homes.
Didn't they have that already at that?
I thought they postponed it because of the heat, but maybe, Brian, you can look at it again just to to see. But if not, if you missed the opening, you can go at any time, and I think it would be well worth the um time for them to go. And it's actually temporary housing for families. So it's one of the first tiny home projects that it will have bunk beds in it and they're. Yeah, and they're actually, they, yes, they've invited council members to go and spend the night if if they haven't had the event yet. So you could, you could go and spend the night. It's in Baldwin Park.
Yeah, no, it's it's a, it's a really good project, and that would be very interesting.
So it would be, and they actually have a play area for the children, and I think it would be really, you could, actually, it would be a great, they can provide activities for the kids.
Field trip.
It sounds like a good field trip. And I can call Marissa and see if there's anything that the youth committee could help that day. Maybe face painting or something with the kids, but it would be a nice field trip for them.
That would be great. Yeah, and one thing I forgot to mention, a couple of us are going to the League of Cali- League of, League of California Cities? Yeah, League of California Cities Conference this week. One of their breakout sessions has to do with the importance of youth committees and engagement with councils on policy decisions that we make. And uh it's being put on or sponsored by the City of Sacramento. They have recognized what we already have, and that is the importance of the youth in the policy decisions of the city decision makers. So I'm gonna attend that, and I'll report back to the committee and, of course, to the council. But I got a feeling that uh I'm gonna hear a lot of stuff that we're already doing. And so that's a testament to to all of you out there and uh and to the committee itself and the hard work I know that Jillian and Peggy put into this uh into this program as well. And of course, uh the backing by our city manager, Brian Cook, uh very helpful to do that, so. We're ahead, we're ahead of the curve in this area, definitely. There's no question about it, so.
Okay, well, thank you all. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I know you probably have work to do from school, so.
Probably have homework to do.
You're welcome to leave at any time also. So don't feel bad about getting up and and walking out if you need to. Okay, we move to item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. I only have one comment card, but that's for later on. Is there anyone? Okay, I'm gonna close. Public comment, move to item seven, consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. We have no public hearing this evening, no unfinished business. New business, item ten, adoption of Resolution Number Twenty-two dash fifty-six twenty-five, approving new EV charge station fees, and Resolution Number Twenty-two dash fifty-six twenty-six, amending the master fees and fine schedule. And we have Adam, yes, our Parks and Recreation Director here with us. Welcome, Adam.
Thank you, uh Mayor Sternquist and members of the City Council. Uh this item we reviewed at our last City Council meeting on August sixteenth. And what we brought before you tonight is a adoption of the Resolution Twenty-two five-six-two-five, which is for the EV charge station use fees. These fees are exactly the same as was discussed at the last meeting. I do have one item of note. Uh in the staff report recommendation, we had recommended a one dollar uh overstay uh fee for every thirty minutes. Uh when I actually went in and and went into our charge point application, we're only able to charge per hour, not by thirty-hour increments for any overages, so overstaying your allotted time. Uh so it's our, excuse me, recommendation to make a amendment to reflect a two-dollar-per-hour uh overstay uh fee, uh which would be two dollars if you round up from thirty minutes to one hour.
Will the grace period remain the same at thirty minutes, or will it be an hour?
Uh that could be up at your discretion, but you, for the grace period, you can keep it at thirty minutes. We are able to keep it at within that timeframe.
I do have a question. So if I, if I have my car there and I'm there for thirty-one minutes, do I get charged two dollars?
Correct.
Or do I get uh pro- pro- prerogative, uh you know?
No, it would just be, so as soon as your grace period ends, uh that one minute over, it's an automatic two-dollar charge for. And then you would have one hour to then, right, to then move it. Otherwise, the next hour, you would incur another two-dollar fee.
So in effect, you would be getting an hour and a half.
Yeah.
Of a, of an extended time to move your vehicle, yes.
And they do get noticed, I believe, too, right?
On their phone?
The charging uh mechanism, that their time has elapsed.
That's correct. Uh within the charge point application, you'll get notifications of when your charge time is coming to an end. And and really, this would only impact people that have either stayed for the full hour allotment where they're getting kicked off, um or if they have become fully charged sometime before that thirty min- or the four-hour timeframe. If you're leaving, right, if you've only spent two hours there and you're ready to leave, then this really wouldn't, you know, come into play. It would only be for those that are either fully charged or have reached their four-hour allotment. Um the second item would be the adoption of Resolution Twenty-two fifty-six twenty-six, which would amend the fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three master fees and fine schedules to reflect the new EV charge uh station use fee and then charge station penalty fee, uh if that's approved by the City Council tonight. And I'm here in case the council has any questions on the staff report.
Councilmember Yu?
Yeah. Um so currently, the charging is open till ten o'clock at night?
Correct, uh six AM to ten PM.
Is there any reason why we limit at ten? Because the parking lot's open?
The parking lot.
The park is not open. The parking lot's still open.
That's correct, yes. Uh we felt that, uh given that it's closer towards a residential portion of the neighborhood, that we wanted to uh, you know, set what we deemed as a reasonable uh timeframe for vehicles to be coming in and out. Now granted, it's, it is a public parking lot, so I believe those hours are until two o'clock AM um for use of that parking lot. Um that's something, if the council so decides, um we can administratively make an adjustment and adjust those hours later. Um and in terms of the fees, it really, it really wouldn't change our fee structure at all. It would just basically extend out the amount of time from, um I believe, if you take a look at the staff report, um from the nine PM till basically the next morning, um that's all the same rate. So it would just be a, an extension of that timeframe. So that's something we could do if that's, you know, at the discretion of the council to extend how late you can continue to charge your vehicle past ten o'clock PM.
Do, I have a question. Do, do the charging stations automatically even shut off at ten o'clock?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we would have to change that cutoff time there?
We can, and that's uh, that's actually a really simple uh change. Uh one of the things that we've done for this week is we've turned off the charge stations during our flex hours. So between uh four PM and nine PM to coincide with the state flex alert, we have shut down our EV charge stations as it not taxes the um, you know, the state's uh energy grid.
Does anybody wanna um comment on extending the hours?
Well, I mean, I can, I can understand Vince's point. Uh but I think at this time, given the fact that it isn't a, basically a residential area, that uh, you know, extending those hours could mean more traffic, I suppose, in those areas after those times. I would suggest that we go with what we have here, and I know that we've already decided we're gonna monitor it to see how it works out, and if it looks like there is a, a call for, let's say, extended hours, we could always change it down the road. At this time, it doesn't appear, and I think one of the reasons we picked these times is that's when they were being used, correct?
Part of it is, yes, and I think the big part was just, the charge stations are on the southernmost portion of that city parking lot, so that is the portion that's closest to the residential area. Um what we would probably anticipate is you just see more um, not necessarily traffic, but um activity of, you know, switching if, let's say, you finish charging at like, you know, eleven, eleven PM, another vehicle may jump in line or jump onto that spot. So you may just see more shuffling of cars um a little bit. But I would imagine that you would most likely see usage um that late because that's a lower price point and lower energy price point. So past nine o'clock is when you'll see the lowest energy costs, so it would be the cheapest time to charge.
Is is usage pretty full-time?
Right now, it is. I don't anticipate it'll continue that way if the fees are adopted. Um I think it's, it's known now that it's a no-cost uh charge station, so we do see very heavy usage of the uh, of the chargers, especially at the peak rate times, which is from four PM to nine PM. Um I would imagine some of that use would probably diminish a bit. Um you know, once the fees are instituted, because it's roughly gonna be the same cost of charging at home versus charging, you know, with the city. Um basically, we're just, what's before you in terms of the fees is is just a direct cost recovery. So what the city pays, the end user would pay.
I have an idea to kind of, with Vince's, right? I know that not only is it close to residential, but it's also, there are some businesses in the area as well. Are there any restaurants or other businesses that maybe stay open till midnight in that area that we're aware of? Because I know when, when we were talking about the, the, the restaurants in, on Rosemead in Las Vegas, a lot of them are open, we extend that till midnight, one o'clock or something like that. I wonder if we were to coincide the hours with something like that so that those who maybe are using those restaurants or businesses could theoretically use it at that time and then be charging up their car.
I would have to double check, but I do know that a couple of our businesses are open past uh ten A and, ten PM in that area, so yes.
So I mean, it would probably be helpful for some of those businesses, so, I don't know. I I would be okay with maybe extending it for now to to midnight, maybe? I don't know. I mean, I think that seems reasonable.
Right.
Yeah.
Fair rather than cutting off at ten o'clock, uh especially if you were to drive up at eight or nine o'clock and you need it, usually takes about four hours, I think, to, well, you can be there for four hours, I think, right?
That would be your max time limit, unless there's no one else waiting in line.
Right, right.
Um so.
I don't, I don't have a problem with extending it to midnight.
And the reason I asked a question was that after nine o'clock is cheaper. So allow people, if you, if you shut off at ten, then they only have one hour to charge. And and if you drive up at nine, you still take advantage of a lower rate. Yeah, um that's one question of mine, but I do have another question, Mayor, right, may, may I?
Yeah, of course, go ahead.
Um I know Edison has a special rate for if you have a home that, and you have a EV charger, uh charging station at home, they have a special rate. Do they give a special rate to cities for having EV charging stations?
I, I got it. Um thank you for that question, uh Councilmember Yu. No, because we are a commercial entity, we do not get that same rebate uh rate structure. Um time of use, which we can talk about, but unfortunately, we do not get that. So our, all of our, all of our accounts are considered government commercial accounts. So we have, we're, we're tied in with that rate structure.
And I don't think that that rate structure from Edison applies to all residences either. There are cer- certain, I think, qualifications you have to meet to get that rebate. It doesn't, it's just not automatic, if I, my understanding.
Well, I know, I know I haven't gotten one.
I haven't got one either. Yeah, it, it doesn't apply across the board. I think a lot has to do with income and all that kind of stuff, too.
Adam and the team have, have taken a really active role in trying to see what we can gather in terms of, and just quite frankly, it was, either there are so many restrictions with some of these programs, or, or quite frankly, it's, it's, it's lea- it's not cost prohibitive for us to just have a single account, do everything else. And if, if the council so adopts this fee structure today, as Mr. Matsumoto has presented it to you, that will recover our cost. Our sunk costs are just gonna be what, you know, how we have initiated the program rollout. And as a public benefit as well, to provide these EV charging stations to the community and our business community around there, the sunk costs we had with the project and then kind of going forward.
We don't have to post these different times and and amounts, do we? I mean, that's, that's, they would get that when they enter into the program, I guess.
That's correct, so um it would display one of two ways. If you have the charge point. If you have the charge point app, app, then when you search for the station and pull it up, it'll show not only the use times, but also the rates. We would also, at least in the notification period, so now if approved through the beginning of October, we'll physically post as well, just so that people are aware that these rates would be taken into effect starting in October first as proposed. But they would get it on their, either the application or digitally on the machine interface itself.
Did you say that these parking lots, you can park there till two in the morning? Is that, did I hear that correctly?
I believe so, if-
Restrictions, because, see, that, that would be my, my problem. And if I say, like, let's say we say, okay, you can use it till midnight, but then that could cause some confusion because it's open till two o'clock in the morning. So I know people are going to come back and say, well, it says I can park here till two in the morning. How come I can only use the charger till twelve o'clock?
Well, I think they'll learn that pretty quickly in the first time.
But I'm just trying to get ahead of the thing. Ryan, do they, do they have a, what time does a parking lot close, do you know?
Around the parks, it closes at ten. Around the shopping malls, you just don't allow parking after two AM.
Oh, okay. So what would this, what would rule would apply to this parking lot?
This one's part of the parking lot, it's a little bit kind of a hybrid.
Yeah.
Adam knows, really, it closes at ten PM, but still remains open for business use.
So, basically, I don't, we're not ticketing if you're there past-
Right, right.
-ten PM because it's part of the business district still.
Will we be putting up a sign that says, for example, well, I guess we don't have to because they'll get that on their, on their, on their phone as far as when you can charge still, I guess?
Correct, yes. It'll, it'll show specifically the hours that you're going to charge.
I'm okay with extending it.
One, one thing of note for the city council that I just want to mention as well, we will bring back after a six-month period, but it could be sooner if you'd like, a status update, update. So you can get information on how it's gone, the changes, institution of the fees. And if there is an extension of the time of use, then we could also bring back any information, whether it's residential feedback or patron feedback regarding the extended time.
Will you have information as to when these things are being used and how often and stuff like that?
We do, yes.
I have one more question. So I, I don't know whether we ticket people for parking past two AM, but potentially if you come at ten o'clock and, and then pick it up, pick up your car the next day, you get not only the electric charge, you get a penalty for leaving your car there longer than four hours, and you also get a parking ticket, right?
Potentially, yes.
That's an expensive-
That's why we have rules.
Yeah, okay.
So Greg, do we need, what do we need to do to, and then do we need a motion after? Okay, so I'm going to open up public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on this item? Steve?
I think I have your, I do, I have a card for you.
Mayor Sternquist, Mayor Protem Man, city council and city staff. Within the next fifteen to twenty years, the amount of electric vehicles are going to blossom to about forty percent of the existing vehicles. By twenty forty-five, on twenty fifty, it'll be a hundred percent. So we need to be ready for this, and the thing is, we need to have codes that people don't go there at two o'clock in the morning like, like council member Chavez was saying, have them there, you know, late at night, that's just going to create problems. And I think there should, should be some signs below these, listing the hours and the municipal code there if they violate it. That way, when the deputies get there, they have a code that they know they can write. They always tell me, make sure that there's, there's a code on those signs. You know, and, you know, you know, twenty thirty-five is the first step up, which is, I think, thirty-five to forty percent. You get into twenty forty-five, you're fifty, sixty percent. By twenty fifty, you're a hundred percent. There is a good article in the LA Times two weeks ago about this and about Governor Newsom signed some bills, he's going to sign some more bills, making this happen. And what I would suggest is that building in safety and code enforcement, get a hold of the specs on these, make sure they know them, and make sure that when somebody puts one of those in, they pull a permit and do it right. Because those, those are outside plugs, so it's a very dangerous amount of electricity to have out there. Two hundred and forty volts is a lethal dose of electricity. Can come in you and leave you, entrance and exit, very dangerous. They, what they're doing is they're doing ground fault plugs for vehicles now. And in the next probably year or so, and even right now as we speak, UL, under Rattler Laboratories, working on new receptacles to meet the code as, as changes occur. And changes will occur on this probably in the next five to ten years easily. And I'd just like to see this done right and make sure that, that there's something enforceable there. If there's going to be problems at some of these electrical, at these electric charging stations, I'd like to see it enforced. Because, you know, having people out there late at night, you're, you're asking for problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, is, I just want to quickly follow up on Steve's statement. Do we, when someone gets a charging station put in at home, do they need to get a permit from the city?
There are, I'll, I'll double check. I don't believe so at all. I don't believe they do, and we have state law, because I'm thinking of the state law related to solar panels, which we have to expedite and go through an expedited process. I, on a basic charger, similar to what we did, what a home charger were, I don't believe so. If they change their electrical panel and stuff like that to accommodate the load that would be required for, for that, yes, then they would have to get the permit for that. But for the charging station itself, I do not believe so.
And, and just to follow up on that, it's my belief, at least based on what I've seen so far, those people who do, are, are purchasing these EV vehicles, most of them have chargers at the home. It's just more convenient than to go look for one. Usually, you're looking for one where you're traveling or doing things, but for most people, they have it set up at their home, and there is no extra charge, there's no permit. Again, unless Brian, as Brian said, unless you're changing the dynamics of your electricity altogether. But just, it's just a charger you just actually add to your existing electric, electric outlet.
But you have two options. But the home charge, which is one ton or two twenty, two twenty, two forty?
Yeah, you can just plug it into a regular outlet.
Yeah.
Or you can actually get the charger that does it faster.
Yeah, the fast charge, which is a higher voltage.
Yeah.
But-
It just uses more voltage, but doesn't change the-
Yeah, but I think that's, Brian was alluding to that. If, if you're doing that, you may have to change out your old service.
Well, yeah, if you have to change something in your electrical box, yeah. You probably need to get a permit for that. And then, one more thing I was going to say, and I forgot now. Oh, well, it'll come to me later, but, yeah.
Any more public comment on this issue? Okay, I'm going to close public comment.
Mayor, mayor, sorry, there's one more card.
Oh. Hannah. Ten o'clock.
Come on, come on up to the thing.
Hi, Lauren and I actually were curious after listening to the speaking. We were wondering, due to the charging outlets, is there a mandatory limit if someone charges their car for thirty minutes, maybe takes it out and then starts charging again? Thank you.
Yes, if I may, the way the system is set up is you get one station session. So if you unplug it, then, if there's nobody in line, then you can plug it right back in and continue to charge. If there is a wait list and if there's people behind you, as soon as you stop your session and unplug, then you have to move to the back of the line. So if there's a queue that exists, as soon as you end a session, even if it's after thirty minutes, then you would have to wait and get in the back of the line until everybody else has gone through that, so.
So if you unplug, you're going to get, and you want to re-plug, no one's there, you're still going to get a new code, right, to?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
You would start a new session-
Got it.
-in essence.
Okay.
I remember what I was going to say. Those of you, remember, if you've seen the news, the new thing for the Kmart, the redevelopment at Kmart, that includes quite a number of charging stations. So we're going to start seeing more and more of them around town, not just have to rely on these, so.
Right.
You know, it's going to be available to people who need them.
And we're going to need to put some closer to your side of town.
Yes, well, my wife has her own, so.
But, Brian, we talked about that, about possibly Live Oak Park being a place to-
Would probably be a good target for some EV stations sometime in the future. No question about that.
Can I ask, Brian? Brian? The, the development on Rosemeat, the big condo thing going in, I don't, I don't remember the name of it.
Yeah, where the old Sears building used to be.
Do you know if they're, they're going to do a lot of EV there?
He's talking across the street.
Yeah.
That one, I'm not certain if the conditions of approval required EV charging stations.
Because they're going to have a lot of cars there.
Yeah, I, I, that one I'd have to check on, Councilmember Viscar. I don't know off the top of my head if that, if that mixed use project required EV charging stations or not. I'm not, I'm not certain. I'd have to, I'd have to check back and get back with the council on that one.
If it was required, would that be the city that would have required it?
I don't think so. I don't believe it is, but I, I'll double, I don't believe it was a condition of approval to have EV charging stations in those private developments, but I'll double check. Usually, there's, there may be parking spaces for, for, because of the commercial, but I don't think they, I don't think that we require an EV charging station. So, but I'll double check though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or public comment?
Okay, thank you. Adam closed public comment. Can we get a council motion?
Before, before, I just want to make a comment. It was interesting observation. Councilmember Viscar was asking me, do I know the, do we know that the, whether it's cheaper to charge at home or cheap, cheaper to charge here? I was just looking up the rate. In peak hours during the weekday, it's actually more expensive to, to charge at our, at our place.
At home?
Right, but the off-peak hours, and that may enter into our discussion, off-peak hours were cheaper than charging at home.
Yes, the, we're, SoCal Edison has a multitude of tiers for energy users. So because of the amount of energies that's dispensed on this meter, we're right around eight thousand to nine thousand kilowatts per month. We get placed into a certain pricing tier, a fee rate tier. So you do see during the peak hours, especially during the summer use hours, it is fairly high and, you know, the off-peak hours, it's significantly lower. But really, what I would imagine is it's meant to reduce that peak usage time as much as possible, especially, again, as you see during these, you know, flex alert timeframes. That's the timeframe that, that most taxes the, the energy grid. But, but yes, if, for the summer rates, for four hours, it's roughly a twenty-dollar charge for those four hours of charge time, which gets you about a hundred miles. So it's not, it's about equivalent to like a gas vehicle that gets like twenty-five miles per gallon. But every other timeframe, it's a significant savings versus a internal combustion car.
And here's another wrinkle in that. The home charger that you install charges faster than these do. So you don't need to charge as long, so that, I think, offsets the cost even more. So if you're, let's say, you can get a full charge in two hours versus four hours, that's going to have an effect on what you're paying as well, so.
Tom, is-
There's a whole bunch of things going on.
Is there, is it Teslas that have a specific charger that doesn't charge with other vehicles? I mean, isn't there some snafu with that?
Tesla has what they call superchargers.
Supercharger?
But those are only at certain locations, and those, you can almost get a full charge in less than an hour.
Oh, wow.
Now, I don't know if they're more expensive or not.
Oh, it's, it's more expensive.
Probably. Hey, what don't you pay for in this world today, right? You're going to pay one way or another.
Even to die.
Yeah.
Well, the initial Tesla owners don't have to pay, they got free charging.
They got free?
Yeah, at super. For the first few people. If you, if you buy it now, you don't get it.
Wow.
Tesla, Tesla owners don't worry about cost.
Probably not.
I don't know.
Well, that's good because I've seen quite a few Teslas lately on trucks being taken to get repaired. So, I'm just saying, you know, be careful what you purchase.
It's a solid grade from us.
Because now they've opened one in Alhambra. On Main Street, a Tesla dealer, so I travel that way frequently to my sister's. So I see them coming in for repair, and I'm like, I don't think I'm buying a Tesla anytime soon. Anyway, all right.
Madam Mayor-
I hope Jane didn't get a Tesla.
When it's time for a motion, there could be a single motion for both resolutions, just administratively.
But Mayor, me, I just, you know, my point of bringing up the rates in, in that is we may want to consider extending it to two AM because we, we, the parking lot is open till two AM.
And the bar.
Well, and the bar, of course. And then, and it'd be because the rate is much lower. Not quite half the residential rate, but it's eighty percent of the, or something like that, of the residential rate. I mean, not eighty percent, it's like sixty percent of the, of the rate. Not quite half, but one is eighteen, the other one is like twenty-five cents.
So I'm not sure, I'm a little confused. How long can a car, how long can a car be parked in that lot where the EV stations are located? What is, what is the time limit, if any, on parking a vehicle, whether you're charging or you're not charging?
So for both of those lots, as Mr. Azumi pointed out, we've been treating them as their business-
So two o'clock?
Two o'clock. If the direction of the council is to, to extend the hours, we'll, we'll continue to treat it as, as, as an extension of the business lot as well.
So people can come and go into that lot up to two o'clock in the morning?
Yes, and we have not been ticketing them.
And, and have we gotten any complaints from the residences in that area regarding traffic or anything like that? I don't, and I, if we have, and I don't anticipate we would be getting any more simply because we've extended the EV charging to be consistent with that time.
I wouldn't-
There aren't enough chargers to make that happen?
Yeah, we, we have not received any complaints, but staff does proactively patrol all the city lots at two AM when they do the overnight enforcement.
Okay.
So if you extended it to two or other times, it's, in terms of any issues that we're, we're seeing, at least, at least, at least at this point, we don't see any, but we'll, we will report back to you at the six-month mark, just to give you an update.
Do you think that the people that would be using it up until two o'clock would be the residents in the area? Because what would someone do if you weren't going to the bar? Would you sleep in the car while it's being charged? I mean, I wouldn't want people hanging out outside of their vehicle till two in the morning.
I, just speculation, but those who are using EV charging stations, I doubt. I would suspect that those who are using them late at night would be the surrounding-
Residents?
Residents of the area.
Okay.
I would, I would agree with that.
I would hope.
Well, we'll keep it monitored, that's all we can do. If it, if it looks like it's presenting a, a problem or creating a hazardous situation, we can always change it.
And we can come back in six months, or if there's, if issues develop, which I really don't anticipate there being any issues developing, but Mr. Azumi and Mr. Matsumoto will come back with, to the council and let you know what they are.
The, the parking lot at Kmart, how long can they park in that parking lot?
That is private, so we don't-
Oh, so we don't control that?
No.
Okay.
All right, so.
All right, I'm prepared to make a motion, if you don't mind. I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution number twenty-two five six two five, approving EV charge station use fee and EV charge station penalty fee and implement on October first, twenty twenty-two, with the amendment that the time available to, to, in which to charge be ex- with the amendment that the time available to, to, in which to charge be extended to two AM.
Okay.
Across the board. And that we also adopt Resolution Number Twenty-two dash five, six, two, six to amend the fiscal year 2022, 2023 master fees and fine schedule to include the adopted EV charge station fees.
Councilmember Chavez, me, I also add that the penalty fee shall be two dollars.
Oh, that's, did, did you already change that or we needed to amend that?
If you could, if, just for the record.
And, and also for the record, amend the penalty fee to two dollars per one hour after the initial thirty-minute grace period.
I'll second that.
That means every hour.
Yeah, it would, there's a thirty-minute grace period and it would be a two-dollar penalty for every hour or partial hour after that.
Or multiples of.
Yeah, whatever, of course. Just two dollars an hour for however long.
Okay. All right. Is there any objection to that?
Peggy will sort all that out.
Okay, maybe we have the real call, please.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay. Well, I think a lot of people are gonna be very happy about that extension.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and the council. Thank you, Mr. Masamoto.
Thank you. All right, item eleven, update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist and members of the council. I have three items just to touch base on, uh, one of which is listed on the agenda, just, and I'll, it's a brief update. Uh, the, as, as, as the council knows, and I've provided some information on, the San Gabriel Valley COG is looking at a long-term transportation plan. What that essentially means is they're looking at either light rail, um, what's called bus rapid transit, or other, um, uh, fast mobility and more frequent mobility throughout the San Gabriel Valley. Right now, they're in a study set, they're in a study portion of this process, which is gonna take at least another year. Uh, there's ten options on the table, one of which is looking up and down Santa Ma, uh, Rosemead Boulevard. Um, there's several options that we as staff have expressed some significant concern to the COG about. Um, if, uh, Mr. Reimers and I actually sent a letter to the COG, uh, about some of the concerns related to that. I'll make sure, um, that, uh, that you have that as well, or resend that to you again. But there are some concerns about rapid tre, rapid, uh, BRT lines going up in town, something like Rosemead Boulevard or other, or other corridor areas. Um, we have expressed our significant concern about that. It is still in the study phase. They're still doing community outreach. That study has not been finalized yet, uh, but I just wanted to make sure, again, uh, Mayor Sternquist asked me to bring this back up just as a, as a reminder. And, um, as things start to progress with that study, and once that study becomes more finalized or we see a final draft, we'll make sure we bring it forward to the council. And that may require some council action at some point as well about expressing some concerns related to that plan.
Brian, since you seen with the, the ten options, three of the options have moved forward and one of those options does have, um, a bus lane coming down Rosemead Boulevard from Huntington Drive. And the gentleman, I forget his name-
A dedicated bus lane?
Well, when I asked that question from the gentleman, he gave a presentation at, um, Foothill Transit's meeting. And he shared that, well, it could be a combination, because I said, our city would be concerned. Our, our streets are so narrowed since we reduced them to accommodate the Class One bike lanes. So putting in a bus lane is, how is that gonna-
Where would you put it?
Where would you put it? And he said that north of where it becomes, um, San Gabriel, there's a section there on Rosemead that's San Gabriel, correct, near the Golden?
Well, I think it's above Huntington or right below Huntington?
South of Huntington.
South of Huntington.
The county section.
Yeah, that's a county area.
So he said, well, you could have a bus come up until the street narrows. And then I said, and then where's it gonna go after that? But basically, the answer was that this adoption of the, the route from going down Huntington, south on Huntington Drive through Temple City into Rosemead could be like a transit, a smaller transit bus. I forget what they're called.
They're, they call them, they, they're called, uh, long haul rapid buses.
Yes.
They're a little bit, but they're a little bit larger as well, which we've also expressed some concern, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't require any dedications. And unfortunately too, during, on the staff level discussions with them, they were not clear related to that. And we, and again, I expressed that while this hasn't been brought to the city council yet, um, at least on the staff, we, I, I know there would be some concerns, significant concerns.
So I think we need to keep on top of this-
Yes, absolutely.
And actually reach out to our supervisor to possibly, she lives in that, close by to that area also, so.
I think before we react to it, it's probably worth for us to check the drawings, cause I believe the nearest lanes we have are eleven feet.
Correct.
Maybe in a few extreme cases, we have a ten-foot lane, so that's should be good for buses.
Maybe they could come up with a bus that can use the bike lane.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, he said it could be, but literally if you go on Rosemead Boulevard, I feel like you could take a, ask your neighbor next door for a look at their ice cream, you're that close.
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty narrow.
But we'll, uh, Councilmember Yu will, they will definitely take a look at, but, uh, some of the preliminary issues were, you know, we just wanted to express some, 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 just making sure that they're doing their due diligence in the process as well, but we'll, we'll double check that as well.
Brian, if you would forward the maps I sent you to council?
Yes, I, those maps that, that were part of that letter, but I'll make sure to forward those maps to council.
So that you can see them also.
No problem. Thank you. Um, uh, two more things. There was an item you had on tonight's agenda, item seven C, which was AB, uh, opposition to AB eighteen eighty-six. Um, it was kept on the agenda, um, even though last week the assembly, it did not pass out of the assembly last week. Thank you to our colleagues in Contract Cities and others. Um, the reason we kept it on the agenda is just to stay on the record because this, um, while, of course, we want, um, those who are working for us as contractors to receive fair and good wages, some of, this is starting to creep into areas of maintenance and other issues that are becoming problematic in terms of contracting. And it is becoming more of a creep into other things outside of the public contract code. And it is some, in some cases, an expansion of what the prevailing wage issue means in terms of the public contract code. Uh, so this will probably, this issue will probably come forward again. Um, so just, just to let you know, it has not passed out of the assembly out of concurrence, or the concurrent legislation did not pass out of the assembly, hence it's not going to the governor for signature. But these are real issues that we're keeping an eye on because as a contract city, um, while we, we ensure and we out, we do our own due diligence to make sure our contractors are treating their employees fairly, um, and obviously in public contract code, which many of the council members here are very familiar with, um, prevailing wage and other labor compliance issues that you have to deal with, ensure that, you know, that we are, we are following the law, but also those contractors are contractors that are following the law, labor law as well. Um, this continued creep is, is something we need to keep watching.
If I may, I saw Mike Fong on Sunday and he mentioned that the vote was thirty-eight to forty-one. And that he thought they were gonna, it wasn't gonna come up, and it was eleven forty-five, just before midnight when it, the vote came up again. And he said it was really close. But, um, Contract Cities did a great outreach program at the, the last minute, reaching out to, um, municipalities and, um, council members to send Mike Fong, you know, notice that we would really appreciate his support. So I think he pretty much came through for the San Gabriel Valley. So if we could maybe send him just a, a note of appreciation, that would be great.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist. And lastly, uh, this weekend, we're proud to bring back, uh, Autumn Festival with our, with our great partners, World Journal. Uh, two PM, city welcome, six PM, uh, some recognition of, uh, Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Mann and the, uh, Lantern, uh, Lantern lighting ceremony as well.
Can you share William's recognition, please?
I'll, but I'll, um, Councilmember Mann is being recognized for some of his work, uh, with World Journal, uh, for Stop Asian Hate Campaign.
Thank you, William.
That's it for me, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And update from our city attorney?
Uh, no legal update tonight. We'll be attending, uh, I and many members of my firm will be attending the League of California Cities Annual Conference this week. So if you need to get ahold of me, um, I'll be in and out of legal sessions tomorrow and Thursday, um, but happy to take your calls. Thank you.
Thank you. Any ad hoc or standing committee meetings? None?
We haven't had any in ages.
You want one?
No.
Okay. Item fourteen, council item separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Anyone?
Nope. I'd just like to express, uh, my best wishes to World Journal and the Autumn Festival. Hopefully have good weather and congratulations to Mayor Pro Tim Mann for, uh, his participation and certainly for the most worthy cause.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may just say a couple words, um, really the, uh, I don't want to overblow the recognition cause to me it's a, it's a small thing that I did. But, um, basically, World Journal, as many of you know, is the largest circulating, uh, Chinese newspaper in the U.S. And so a couple of months ago, they were reaching out to a lot of elected officials, particularly in the San Gabriel Valley area, um, just asking about, you know, how, how has, how has each city responded to the, um, the so-called, um, Stop Anti-Asian Hate Campaign? Now, we're lucky because we didn't really have much at all. Uh, that, that was actually what I told World Journal. And said even though we, we had, have a very large Asian-American population, uh, but we weren't affected in the same way as, um, as many of us reading the media could have seen some of the incidents. Um, so that, that was something that, um, I don't, I mean, it was, it's hard to really find an explanation why we alluded a lot of this. Um, but I think they were just appreciative that there, that there were elected officials who were keeping a pulse on this within the communities and, uh, just being willing to be interviewed for it. Um, I personally have not watched or, or looked at the article myself, just because I, I'm not a big fan of hearing my own voice. So, uh-
Of what?
Of hearing my own voice. I think they recorded some, some of it.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, that's, that's just me. But, um, but, uh, as for the, the main thing, I, I do want to also extend my appreciations to, uh, our staff working with World Journal on bringing this back. Um, I, I know it's kind of a reduced size compared to before. I don't think we're doing road closures.
Correct.
Right? So, um, but, but I appreciate World Journal for, for, um, sticking with us. Um, I think it's a great event to try to continue. And I, I know with sort of the post-pandemic reality of, of where we are today, a lot of different entities and companies are kind of recalibrating the scale and scope of, of large public events that they're doing. So, so, um, I'm, I'm happy that they've decided to redo it and, and hopefully as, as we continue forward, um, we can kind of build on that.
If, if we can, um, Brian, possibly we can send, uh, the picture of William's recognition from World Journal with, it'll be in the newspaper, I'm sure, send it to our sister city in Taiwan because he went to Taiwan and I think any time we can, you know, show them what we do here and keep that momentum going. Because we haven't, I mean, with the pandemic, we haven't really heard from our sister cities, nor have we reached out. But that might be nice because I'm sure they would be so appreciative to see your picture and, you know, have that recognition, so.
Sure. Yeah, in, in fact, speaking of them, I think, um, I know Councilmember Chavez and I communicated a little bit on this, but originally, they had reached out to us-
Oh, did they?
About two months ago to involve our youth committee to, to, to be, uh, in fact, to, to do a webinar, um, addressing environmental issues, uh, at the youth level. And so they, they were gonna host it. It was something that they were interested in and they wanted to kind of tap into the relationship they had built with us. But, um, due to some scheduling issues, they had to cancel, so we never really, um-
Well, maybe we can-
Maybe in the future.
Try to reach out again and see-
Maybe in the future, yeah.
Yeah, can do something like that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to keep in touch and I agree, if, if there is opportunity, we should try to build that momentum.
Yes.
Forgot to mention one more thing about the, about the, about our event this weekend. We will have a city booth, so we will be staffing it. Councilmembers, feel free to come by. We'll be staffing it from noon to six, both on Saturday and Sunday. We will have a really good presence of our sheriff's department out there, so sheriff's personnel, yes, Van is right there. He's gonna be staffing it with us. Hopefully, we'll have a few, few other members of our, our community as well. So we will, we will be there and helping the community as well. So we'll be there, um, it'll be staffed from six to, twelve to six, both Saturday and Sunday.
Will there be a sofa there this year too?
I will, I will have some nice comfy, uh, chairs, some snacks.
I think we have, we need to have time limits on those though as well.
Otherwise, a penalty, right?
Okay.
And we are wearing polo shirts, right?
Yes. Uh, Councilmember Mann made that request and I was happy to honor that and say, yes, we are going to wear polo shirts.
And it's gonna be-
And I'm sure Councilmember Viscara will wear shorts with those polo shirts.
Of course.
Sorry, Mayor Sternquist, I neglected one more announcement and I'm gonna ask Brian, Mr. Azumi, to step up to the microphone real quick and just reminder of, uh, something that we are re-initiating again, our Neighborhood Watch.
Yeah, so the city will be re-initiating our Neighborhood Watch program. Uh, we'll be meeting this month and next month, but it will not be our traditional format of meeting in different areas. Uh, we will be bringing back, uh, Tacos al Chaparito, so we will have our taco man at our Neighborhood Watch meetings. And if everything continues as planned, beginning in January of twenty twenty-three, we will resume our normal Neighborhood Watch meetings in the ten different areas.
Brian, do you have the dates?
Uh, September fifteenth is the meeting this month, so that's next Thursday. And that will be at Live Oak Park from five thirty PM to seven thirty PM. And in October, it will be on Thursday, October twentieth, again at Live Oak Park from five thirty to seven thirty PM.
Are you, are you planning to maybe have a sign or something at the Autumn Festival so folks will take notes?
We, we will have, uh, our cert booth and we will have a Neighborhood Watch booth, so we will have information about the meeting.
Great. I think it's, um, very timely to have them. I know a lot of people have been asking, so they'll be thrilled to know that we're gonna move forward with our regular schedule next year, but that we're going to do these two.
Correct.
Before the year ends. So, thank you for that.
Mayor, real quick question, uh, Brian, O'Brien's up there. How did our smog, uh, not smog, catalytic converter last-
It went very well. We-
I noticed there were a lot of people lined up really early.
Yeah, we started again at three thirty. We were ready to set up, and so the event started at four. However, because of the line that we had, we started etching at three thirty and we did a hundred and ninety-one? A hundred and ninety-one etchings that day. And so we beat our previous record of a hundred and eighty-seven.
And didn't, didn't you have to be a, did you have to be a Temple City resident to do that or no?
No, the position that we took was we wanted to be open to all. There may be people that are visiting Temple City that may be a victim of a catalytic converter theft. And so our, our objective is just to get it etched, uh, regardless of your residency.
Good.
You know, I, I just want to share that one of my neighbors actually yesterday took the initiative to get every person on my streets phone number, email, um, you know, along with their address so that we all had it. And along with that, I mean, you know, we're on a cul-de-sac, but it's a long cul-de-sac. So there's quite a bit of houses there. And then today, she sent, she put everybody's names and phone numbers and all that information into the WhatsApp and called it Camellia Watch so that we have an extra group of hands to help our sheriffs. And, um, at any time, if somebody sees something suspicious, they just go- something suspicious, they just go on to the Camellia Watch and put it in, or if they think there's a car that's suspicious in front of someone's house, they can put into the group chat with all of us and just say, is this a guest? Do you know that person? It's a little bit easier on a cul-de-sac, because we pretty much know who comes up and down our street on a regular basis, and there are families that visit, but it really made me feel great that every one of the residents on my street wanted to participate and wanted to do this. So just a thought that if someone takes an initiative on your own street to to do that, it can be really helpful and help support our sheriffs.
Where is it, from Garibaldi up to the end of your street?
It's from, actually, Woodruff.
Oh.
So because there are some friends of the people north of Woodruff that wanted to be engaged in, I don't know if they're gonna set up a little separate, because it's it's kind of a big group, when, if you do all that street, from Woodruff to Garibaldi, so maybe they'll split it up, but they did get the names and phone numbers and email addresses from the people there also.
So does Neighborhood Watch folks help, or?
None of them are really Neighborhood Watch people, they just were concerned about, you know, doing what their part and how they can.
So it's totally ad hoc?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is really nice to know, that people are engaged and and want to help.
But does Neighborhood Watch can help with?
I think they could, I think you, they've talked about that before, right, Brian, about maybe setting up with, at Neighborhood Watch meetings, setting up a, something with your own neighbors?
Yeah, we do have the citywide neighborhood area watch program, but we do encourage neighbors to know their neighbors, and they can set up their own groups, WhatsApp, GroupMe, Facebook, those are all great ways to communicate within internal networks, within your community. If people want to have individual Neighborhood Watch meetings, the team and myself, we would be available to go to those individual meetings. However, there's not a lot of interest in that usually, because it has to be hosted in someone's house, and someone doesn't typically want to host it within theirs, which is why we came up with the area watch concept, so that it was in a neutral location within, still within the community.
Yeah, and I think.
I hate to say it, but I had somewhat of a different experience with something like that in my neighborhood. Once they find out, once they found out who I was, all that I got were complaints, why this, why that, so. You know, it can work two ways.
They already have my.
Well, I understand that, but.
Email address, so.
Yeah, there were people out there that, how did you get my email, or how did you get my text? Why are you texting me all the time?
And and was the hottest topic, our streets?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Well, but anyway, I feel, I I'm I'm really grateful that someone took the initiative to do that.
Very good, most cities do that, I mean, there's, you know, we have, we have kind of the best of all worlds, we have not only citywide Neighborhood Watch program, but also encourage the smaller ones that many cities do, so a combination of both, obviously, is a win-win situation.
Right. So it encourages us, too, to to maybe know someone that will move in that we didn't know before. I mean, there are two homes for sale on my street, so when, we'll invite them to be part of it, and hopefully, get to be more neighborly than.
And and I hate to say it, but given the past history of your street, it's probably a good thing to have.
It's the home of the Camellias.
Stuff happening all the time on your street, it's like, everything's always going, something going on there, so.
It's just a, it's a very nice, but very engaged, I'm gonna say engaged street.
That's a good, good thing.
How many fatalities?
Only one that I know of, and it was an accident, so. Okay, um, are there any additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda? Nope. Okay. If anybody doesn't have anything else up here, then we are adjourned. Thank you.